Order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan. Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Eidman. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. A motion on approval of the agenda.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Well, tonight, we have a presentation to do. It was brought to my attention a few weeks ago that KSGM celebrated on July 3rd their 75th anniversary serving St. Genevieve. And we thought it would be a good idea to bring the folks in and do a proclamation on that anniversary. And it's my honor and a privilege to read this and then present it. So this is a proclamation from the office of the mayor, whereas Elmo and Norbert Donzie doing business as Donzie Community Company obtained a license from the FCC for a radio station in St. Genevieve. And whereas KSGM radio station began broadcasting at 6:00 AM July 3rd, 1947. KSGM was located at 1450 on the AM dial with a power output of 250 watts. And KSGM's first studio was on the second floor of 245 Merchant, then 15 South 4th Street, and eventually on Radio Hill in North St. Genevieve. And KSGM's pioneer broadcasting schedule included local news of interest to St. Genevieve. And it's from its inception, KSGM has provided play-by-play broadcasting of the St. Louis Cardinals baseball to generations of local fans. And KSGM began providing live coverage of the St. Genevieve and Valley Catholic High School football games, beginning on September 27th, 1947. And they began broadcasting local band concerts on July 28th, 1947. And has provided a timely emergency information to local citizens in times of trouble. And its owner, Donzie Communications Incorporated, has significantly enriched the lives of St. Genevieve residents for 75 years. Therefore, I, Paul Hassler, Mayor of the City of St. Genevieve, do hereby proclaim Sunday, July 3rd, 2022, as KSGM Day in the City of St. Genevieve in recognition of their 75 years of service to our community. In testimony whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, this 14th day of July, 2022. Anyone want to come up and receive it?
They talk all the time on the radio, so I guess.
That's right. But with that, thank you very much. Thank you for the service to the community. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Takes us to our city administrator's report. So you have a copy at your seat, better late than never. Well, we'll start with water main construction next week, when they install the new main across North Gavory Creek, right next to Main Street. After that's completed, they'll begin tying in homes on North 4th Street. So you'll see some work back on North 4th Street later to get all those connections. Right now, they're doing the pressure test. I'm guessing passed okay because I didn't hear anything negative. And they're doing the back team. Make sure they get rid of all, any bacteria that's in there. So we should get that test back in a week. And then they can start doing the cuts. We start working on individual budgets. We are through almost all of them. COVID kind of got us on the last one we were going to do today because the supervisor is out because of COVID. So we'll have to wait and do that in a week or so. But we're close to getting everything done. All of we've kind of figured out what our revenues are and our expenses. So we'll be putting that, I'll be putting some of that together this weekend. And then we'll have the rest of it in a couple of weeks. But you'll be seeing something in August. So the August 12 meeting, you'll see the big picture. And what our expenses are, what we're looking at. And Cochran Engineering has helped us with the multiple water projects. So we have submitted the ARPA funding for the generators and for the water projects. And then we did the TAP program today and submitted that to the state for the sidewalk on St. Mary's Road. We'll see how far those go. Any questions? That's it? Hey, thank you, Happy. Our staff reports, Kenny's unable to be here. Is any questions on, got his report?
You know if they finish the roof?
I don't know. I hadn't heard.
Somebody's still there today working on it.
What are they working on? Good. Okay, that brings up David.
Good evening. You've got our report there. He notes we did not have our commission meeting this month, or we won't next Monday. We don't have anything to consider, but we definitely will have one in August. I did put a note on there about the Sork preservation grants. So SHPO did notify us that they are approved through the SHPO office here in Missouri, but the federal funding still hasn't been approved. So once that happens, I will let you know. When I talked to our SHPO representative, she anticipated late summer, early fall. So we'll definitely have to adjust the timelines on that grant that was submitted in November. So just FYI. Under the comprehensive plan update, there isn't a whole lot of update there. So we're still planning on having public outreach meetings at some point. Hopefully July, but that's quickly ticking away. So it might trickle into August or September. Planning and zoning. We had a meeting and then you'll have a special use permit for consideration this evening. And then we will most likely will have an August meeting I put on there. And I think Happy has mentioned that we'll do a subdivision of the Progress Parkway property at that point, as long as we have the survey at that point. And then I added a city-county cooperation. I know Happy keeps you updated on all these things, but there are a lot of things going on between the city and county right now. So such as, you know, discussion of extending Bowser Drive. The Chamber and IDC meet again next week, but more likely that's going to fall to the county if that does happen. Those ARPA grants that have been talked about, the ones in particular for this, still haven't opened up. So hopefully they open up in September. We shall see that that will come. Flat grant, still waiting determination. That was supposed to be by the end of May, but it will come at some point, a determination. And then we intended a little bit about using bro funds for possibly replacing the North Main Street Bridge. I don't know that the county's on board with that, so we shall see. There also, you can use those funds for low water bridges. So that might be a consideration that they're thinking about also. And then I know you all have been talking about EV charging stations, and so has the county. So I just wanted to get some of that information out there, even though I know Happy is keeping you guys abreast of that. And I think it might even be on our agenda later this evening.
That's really everything I have unless you have any questions. Yes?
Dave, under that heading, that last pull-up, could you dive into that a little bit, assistance with tourism?
Sure. The county committed $10,000 towards marketing, to help out with tourism marketing. I think Jeff was a huge help with going over there and presenting, you know, what he'd like to do with that funding. And the county assisted with that money.
Was that specifically for the billboards?
That I couldn't tell you for sure what it was used for.
That's what I remember.
So it's not, so it was one project? It's not an ongoing?
Right. I think it's, I think it's a start.
Okay.
If they're willing to do that, they're probably willing to do other things as time goes on. So that's, that's the message that we got from the county commission.
So that'll be an ongoing communication with you, Jeff, and them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Dave, have you had any more time to look at any of these nuisance violations?
Yeah.
Changing some of them or?
What we talked about, I'd say probably six months, six weeks ago, maybe two months ago. I'm still looking at bringing those back to you in ordinance fashion. Along with tiny housing. That's turned out to be a little bit more of a task than I thought. Trying to squeeze, you don't want to build a 400 square foot house or 500 square foot house on an 8,000 square foot lot. And, you know, we have some minimum requirements for lots in our zoning. So there's some tweaking that needs to be done there. And then I'll bring it to you to consider. But the nuisance ordinance, yes, they will come to you.
So how does that, with these tiny houses, a lot of them being on trailer frames or wheels, how does that change the whole mobile home, I mean?
Well, that's some of the things to consider.
Right.
Is it going to be on a slab? Is it going to be on a trailer? Are we going to allow that? Are we going to identify a section of the city? Is it going to be the mobile home park area that we have already? Is it going to be, you know, a different zone that we need to add in? So I kind of want to get some more of those answers together, bring it to you. Probably in a work session. And then planning and zoning and back to you. So it's, it's definitely something a little more difficult in a smaller community because we only have so many zones to work with. Whereas your larger communities, larger cities, you know, they may have four or five different residential districts where it fits. This doesn't really fit in one of ours right now. But I think it could help. And I think there's opportunity out there for folks to take advantage of it.
Other questions? Thank you, David. Please stand to committee reports.
Nothing really to report.
Very good.
That's different. Very good.
Are there any public comments? Takes us to our consent agenda. Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So at 6:11, we'll do a public hearing. The mayor and the board will hold a public hearing to consider requests from Mark Buckeye for a special use permit to allow guest lodging at 286 South DeBorey Street in R2 General Residential District. Hello, again. Hello, David.
Mr. Buckeye, I applied back on May 23rd. We got the proper notifications sent out to the neighbors. I got no calls from any neighbors. We had the public hearing posted in the paper a couple of weeks ago. And then planning and zoning held their meeting on the 7th. And the special use permit was passed by a vote of five yes, zero no, three absent. Any questions for me on that? You want to say something you can?
If anybody has any questions for me?
Does that property go all the way down to the creek?
It does go all the way to the creek.
It's cut. Creek's deep driveway there.
Yeah, it does. It does.
But as you indicated here, you got two upper levels parking space.
Well, yeah, you get the top part of the drive. And I'm wanting to do, when you first come into the drive, make it right, right there. Find a room right there. Then I've been offered driveway across the street. If any.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Buckeye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So during the public meeting at 6:13, takes us to old business, second reading of Bill Number 4498, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Adopting New Ward Boundaries in Alignment with the 2020 Census, is outlined in Article 2, Large and Precinct, Sections 105.070, Adoption of the Municipal Code. Will it prove? Second. Got a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4498 now becomes ordinance 4419.
Thank you. So in new business, we'll need an approval of a low bid of Core and Main, of low bid of Core and Main of St. Louis, Missouri for waterline fittings, et cetera, in the amount of $8,673.38. Motion to approve?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to the first reading of Bill Number 4499, An Ordinance Approving a Special Use Permit for Mark Buckeye that will allow guest lodging at 286 South DeBorey Street.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
That takes us to the second reading of Bill Number 4499, An Ordinance Approving a Special Use Permit for Mark Buckeye that will allow guest lodging at 286 South DeBorey Street.
Motion to approve? Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arberster. Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4499 now becomes ordinance 4420.
Thank you. Is there any other business? If there's no other business, we'll adjourn the meeting. So we are into July. I have not seen final plans yet because the engineers have been swamped that Steve Bacon uses. So my thought is we don't worry about remodeling this in this budget year because by the time we go through all the bidding process, we'll be in the next budget year anyway. So I've talked to Steve, but we haven't, haven't connected. A little disappointed in that. But thought is we just go ahead and draft what we want to do on the city hall side. Who'd do all of this? Like we did the police department, it was one half of the building. We'll just do this half of the building at the same time. So we'll have to get the committee together again, sit down with Steve and go through the plans and kind of finalize those. And then we can get those set off. And then we're not in a rush for that, for the engineers again to get it on their agenda to start working on the engineering part of that side of the building, which I don't think there'll be as much. It'll be more electric. The HVAC will probably stay as is. There may be an outside air draw for that unit. That may be the only thing with HVAC that they'll add on. The rest of it's going to be moving some walls, putting walls up because we're going to put in offices. I've got money in that line item I can, I can use at this point with the, with the architect, if I can get him to give me a number, that's within that, that range. So if you don't mind, if we just postpone it and just do both sides at the same time, I don't see why not. And again, unless we just want to do this, then we can, we budget for next year and we do this next year. And then the year after, we would do the city hall side. And I'm not even guaranteeing that we'll get the city hall side done next year either, even if we're doing both of them. I mean, when we go out for bids, I don't know what contractors, how busy they're going to be. Because if they're getting into, now, most of this is infrastructure, but getting into this ARPA stuff is making, you know, you're trying to attract the same type of workers and employees that, you know, everybody's going to be wanting to use for this type of labor. So that could be difficult for contractors to find the right people.
Happy, do you have any concerns about the current staff? How, how they will work if, I mean, I don't know if, when it was two separate projects, if there was a plan to utilize this space while that space was being worked on? No?
No.
Parkhouse, isn't it?
We were, my plan was moving out of the building.
Okay. While this was going to?
No. This, this would have been isolated enough. I wouldn't too worry. It'd be like the back. The back wasn't an issue.
Right. But then will that mean more time? That you'll have to have staff in a separate location?
It could, yes.
Is that a concern?
I mean, it's, you're going to have to relocate anyway. If we do everything at the same time, it might, it's going to be better to get everything wired and put together. So, yeah, I figure about six months is what it's going to take for us to relocate, for that side to be completed. And we don't have a space to go to yet, so that'll be figured into the budget. But I, six one half dozen another.
Okay.
We could, we could do that. But I think we would still be out of that side the same amount of time.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Oh, no, she pretty much hit it.
Oh, good.
So if you're okay, well, we've got the money budget for engineering, for it's for phase three of our city hall project. If you don't mind me pursuing it and getting Steve working on it, we can get started on that part of the project. And we've gone through a lot of it. It probably won't take that long. It's just, he's busy and hard to get hold of, so.
With a larger project, we more likely be more bid.
Yeah.
Better bid.
Could be, yeah. Yeah, because this would be kind of small.
Cost-effective to do it all at one time, too.
Good point, yeah. If you all are okay with that, I'll move forward with it. Okay. Carry on. All right. All right. Stormwater review. We've, we've chosen our stormwater engineer. We can now start getting them. Again, we're bumping into everything else that's going on in the world. But we're not in a big rush. But it would be nice to get this started. You can take that back to your constituents and say, we have, we are looking at this and we've got an engineer assigned to it. Here's what we're doing. So the first areas we looked at were the northwest part of the city, Cedar Lane, Rosier, down to Shoes, and the International Subdivision. So we've, we've looked at those areas. We took the engineer and that's how we kind of compared when we were doing our research for the RFQ. But we also have like Washington Street. That's been questioned about that water going into North Gavory. And so we've got $60,000, $62,000 allocated for ARPA money to do this. What other areas would you like, besides the three that we've already said yes to, what other areas would you like for us to look at?
Prioritize any one of these three that's dangerous?
So these three came in at a price of $26,520. So that's less than what our, what our allocation is. So we know those three will fit.
Okay.
What else? Well, I think you look at, you, Second Street.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a problem area. I think we look at that.
When we started talking about these other areas, I heard from several people at Washington and Second and that area, wondering why they were not getting looked at, too.
I think that's a good area to look at. So we had that point base, if we wanted to look at the sinkholes, if you want to look at that. Now, it approaches from 61 back across the properties and into the sinkhole. I think that's a good idea there. Without that piece, you don't gain a lot. Yeah. So, yeah. Okay.
I can tell you down along Market Street, on down back to the water plant, you know, those people have continually brought up the point. So I'm sure we need to include that area also.
So that's part of the northwest.
Oh, and the whole northwest corner.
Yeah, the northwest corner comes down. That's where it actually flows through. That's, that's, that's part of it. It is, yeah. And I haven't heard that much from anybody north of North Gavory Creek. So I'm not sure if there's any trouble areas there. A lot of that goes uphill, up Maxwell Hill. And I mean, you're, you're then speeding down. Maybe along Lahey, but I haven't had anybody ask me any questions about it or some issues about it. You always, on, on Lahey, you get glass flooding in there where that, you know, everything goes in and the watershed goes on down. But you have. Forward in Lahey, but that's bad there, but there's no. No, there's no. Putting something in there would be expensive. Well, yeah, because all that water's coming down. That's coming out, all that water comes out as hell. All the way through there. And if you're ever going to do anything, that's where you have to be. So, yeah.
Happy, there with some of the other board members and stuff, what we kind of learned in those committee meetings about can't dig out creeks, we can't widen creeks and those type of things that.
So I don't know, that was the opinion of one of our engineers. That the issue can come down to if it is a feeder into a listed creek, that there could be restrictions based on the water. I can't think of what it's called offhand. But there's water regulations from the federal government. So you may have issues making adjustments or changes to those side creeks, or those side water flow areas because of the way the US government has started regulating waterways. So, but I didn't get the same feeling from Cochran that they felt the same way, that there is a little more leeway in doing that. So, but that, that's all going to be part of the report when you, we get it to say, here's what you can do to make improvement. And then if there are restrictions, I think that needs to be included in the language of what we can do and what we can't do. And then we look at taking those improvements or the homeowners making those improvements. Or there are nationwide permits to get into creeks and waterways to make changes, such as North Gavory Creek. We are crossing it twice with our waterline. There is a nationwide permit that allows us to do that without having to go through the Corps of Engineers to get an approval or a four permit. So those are out there. It's just locating them. So I'm hearing five places. To the point base.
That's the only places I know about.
Yeah, Washington, North Gavory, northwest part of the city, down by Shoes and Rosier, and then International Subdivision. Okay. Let them know we're getting started on that.
We are. So we're going to look at the drainage, you know, where we're talking about the new subdivision where that drain, those, the sinkholes, where the water's going in, we're looking at those areas.
I was going to, do you want to do the south sinkhole? We can, or we can wait until we get a proposed subdivision development. And then that's.
That's a problem up there. It can be a problem anyway. It's been a problem for us.
It has been. And it obviously would make most sense because if you have a new subdivision, you're going to drain more water than you currently do. But I don't think we're in a position where we wait till all that unfolds. I think we need to.
Yeah, I think we go look at it.
So the subdivision would have to create its own stormwater drainage anyway. So what goes in there shouldn't be more than what currently is running off of that property.
Well, then there you go.
Yeah, in theory, in theory. Yeah. Yeah, so that will, that will not, it won't alleviate everything, but that's.
See, but looking at, on the up, on the upper end of that, on the cross project, Progress Parkway, on that main drainage ditch that comes down through by the Valley's Ball Field. There is, found it, and there is a retention pond that the city owns. You know, and the retention.
I improved because there is no development up there.
Okay, because that's my question was because we had the retain, when I looked at it, it, it looks good and it's got a dam across it. And it's got two pipes in it. One's plugged and one's not.
Right.
You know, and the water continues coming down through there. And so now I understand why it's not, it's not developed.
Okay, all right. It's actually got two of them. There's another one on the other side of Progress Parkway, Parkway up by the fourteen acres everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, I know. There's one up there, too. So, okay.
Very good. Okay. We will look at all of these. Yeah. ARPA EV charging stations. So after I sent this out, the state finally sent out the openings for the charging station using the Volkswagen Trust. And so we heard, we heard things a little differently this time than we did last time. So when I based my fifteen thousand dollar ARPA allocation that we agreed to, I thought that was what was the, you know, the cost it was going to be for the level three charging station. It turns out that is we were discussing level two, which is not what the state is requiring for their grant. They want level three. The level three is thirty-five forty minutes to charge a vehicle from zero to eighty percent. Level two will do it in seven to eight hours. And is much cheaper. So seventy-five thousand dollars is what it costs for a level three charging station. And about eleven thousand dollars is what it costs for a level two, which has two connections to it. A level three only has one connection, actually has two connections on it, but you can only use one because it's got two different ports where they, how they do that. So you're looking at the seventy-five thousand per unit plus the cost of what citizens has to do to make improvements for if they can't put a transformer on the pole, they have to put a transformer on the ground. And then the wire that runs, you know, in between, and then the wire that runs over to a substate or not substation, but it's a small electric setup that then you have to, that's something that goes with our putting it together. So that could be twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars just to put in the, for us, it's the meter and the, and the electric panel, your breaker panel. So the cost has escalated. And the reason I even pursued this, we had asked Cape Electric to come in and talk about it, was when I looked at the, at what Volkswagen grant turned out to be, they finally put out there what the other cities have gotten that along the routes they've been putting them. It was like two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollars. And I went, that is not what we were, we were thinking. Like, did they put in just a bunch of units? I thought maybe it was just a bunch of units. But it turns out it was the level threes and they were putting in two or three, minimum two, according to the Volkswagen Trust. And then it was the other, other costs that goes along with it. Now, if you're in Ameren's neighborhood, they've got incentives to do this, but Citizens doesn't have that. They're not, you know, they don't have that type of incentive or any extra incentives that we could try to tap into. So that leaves it up to us. So the question comes down to, we can, we can, if even trying, we can wait till the federal government comes out with their, the BIL, the Bill Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, we can wait till that comes out in January and see if there's any matching money that would be for level two stations. We can reallocate the fifteen thousand that we put aside for our EV stations and then just wait. Or we take that ARPA money and then in the next budget year, we can allocate money. It would be all on us, though, to put in charging stations at the welcome center, say. Or we can try working with the county and see if they want to split it. And it would go into the county parking lot rather than at the welcome center. But it would be up to, it would be all on us and not, not any, if federal government doesn't have any matching money, it would be all on us. So if you do a couple of the eleven thousand dollar stations, so you've got four, four spaces, twenty-two thousand, the electric, it'll be about twenty-five. If you put it in the county parking lot, it should be pretty easy to get the electric there because it's up on a pole already. And they may not have to do as much to put a transformer in as it would be for the high-power line. So do you have any preference?
The negative I've gotten on this whole thing is, is the choice of where we're, we were going to put it. People were complaining when I come in where I work and saying, you know, we're already four miles off the interstate. If anybody's traveling, they got to come four miles into town and then navigate their way through town when they may already be low. And they thought out along the sixty-one, thirty-two corridor somewhere would be a better fit for something like that, which if the county's involved, I guess the security center or, or water park would be a better location or in that area. But that's the only pushback I've gotten was putting it way downtown, which anybody not familiar with the town, then they got to figure out how to get there and navigate their way through. And that's eating up their battery doing all that. I don't know that much about it all. I've learned more tonight than I've looked at.
So has Mike. Turn that radio off.
I mean, the support is there. People think it's a great idea, just a horrible location. Locating it on the far end of town, hidden behind like our, our welcome center instead of out in a more accessible area where there's more traffic.
Is there room at Main Street Bathrooms behind there or something with Valley Street?
Well, that still has to make them navigate all the way through.
Yeah. But, but you're not going down a one-way street and having to get to the other side of the road.
So at Main Street Bathrooms, you would have to do landscaping because it goes up.
The concern was being on the main highway instead of on our city streets, like sixty-one or thirty-two.
So for us, and for the people that say anything, we're secondary. We're not, we're not trying to be a major stop for EVs. And that would be along the highway. That's, that's where they planned them. So Festus has it, Perryville's getting it, Cape Girardeau, up down to Sykes. And then, you know, you're staying on fifty-five. Yes, I think that's, that's a great spot for it. For us, we're looking at making it an option for somebody that wants to come to town that has an electric vehicle and gives them a place to charge. We're not trying to be a primary.
Having heard recently, as recently as thirty minutes ago from a Tesla owner, I mean, they've got navigation where these stations are. So I mean, I don't know that they'll be hidden in a town.
I think the point is if they're going to stay for a while, especially if they need to get half a charge or want to get half a charge or staying at a B and B or something, that's going to get them somewhere central where they can eat, shop, hit the museums, spend some time.
Yeah.
And I think that's what a lot of people, that's how they plan their trip. They say, I need to stop here and here, you know, here are the things within walking distance that I can do. So I think downtown's a good location, especially because the navigation systems are so smart. You're just going to say, send me to the station and the cars.
You talk to that same Tesla owner.
That's done on board with the car.
Yeah.
We reboot the boss somehow?
Yeah.
But you will have charging fees.
Yeah, charging.
I mean, you're going to spend, you're using your own electric, but yeah, there'll be charging fees. And it usually goes through a company like ChargePoint. That's one of the bigger companies. There's others that we can, we can, they all go through Sourcewell. So we don't have to bid. We can look at what we think works best. It's already been bid out. So there would be some fees that we would get back. I don't know how much that would be. We didn't have any estimates. Our salesman didn't have any idea either. Just giving us options.
She was talking on the county parking lot where the old county services building used to be, right?
Yeah. And, and the county, I mean.
I mean, pretty visual.
If the county wants, wants to go for a, you know, the Volkswagen grant and put it out by the highway, if the city wants to participate, then that's up to the board to say yea or nay. But at this point, we have not talked about that. We have considered trying to get them in town for visiting. And just making, making it an option for, for those that do want to visit, that they have a place to, to charge up.
So happy if we went with the level two, which is no, no grants, nothing like that, other than the eleven thousand for the two-connection unit, what would our expenses?
I don't know what the cost for citizens to put in their equipment. And it'd probably be about, be about twenty-five thousand for the electric panel system that we'd have back there as well. And then if there's any, any cost with citizens to get, get the electric from that panel to their transformer, whether that's on the pole or on the ground.
Okay. So that twenty-five thousand was for the level two?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's pretty much going to stay.
Okay.
Yeah, you're going to have to estimate that.
And did you end up, I know the, the original meeting with the county was, it was canceled or rescheduled? Did you end up meeting with them?
That's where all this came from.
Okay.
We met last Friday.
Okay. So did they have any kind of a preference or was it just, we're going to consider all of this?
Just they're, they're thinking the same thing.
Okay.
Happy, this just seems like it's going to be an evolving thing, you know, from these level two to level three, you know, that, I mean, why wouldn't a hotel want to put in a level two charging station? People come there, spend the night, plug their car in. It just seems like there's a lot of opportunity here for a lot of things to evolve with these charging stations and, you know, drawing people to your business and, you know, just seems like it might be early, but then now's the opportunity of time to just, to get free money.
Yeah, that's, I think, kind of the key. While we're not, while I'm not saying jump on this, is that we don't have the matching money. I think that's, that's, if we don't get that, then I don't see, I don't see the need as, as, I don't see the, us as having that much of an option to do this. If we can get, if we can get grants to help offset that cost, then, then whatever we can get based on our, our allocation, then we'll go for that.
I was like, Mike, you know, we got, I got part of that same thirty-minute conversation and, you know, people are going to install their own charging stations at their own homes. So we're only talking about travelers primarily, I guess, of the majority that are going to accommodate.
So just to give you up to date, no decisions have to be made. We'll just kind of see what happens. It sounds like we don't want to work on the Volkswagen. I wouldn't recommend trying for the Volkswagen grant. I don't think we have enough matching money. And we can, we will, we'll wait and see what happens with the federal money. And then if that doesn't work, then we'll figure out something else to do with that money. We'll reallocate it. So, all right. Moving on to Bosler Road Extension. So with this ARPA, these ARPA funds that are coming out, IDC and the county and the city have talked about that economic development funding may be available for the Bosler Road Extension for multiple reasons, because it would be economic development. It would connect, it would get another north-south route to connect with Progress Parkway and sixty-one and, and M. And would, but it would also serve the, the point of emergency vehicles having access to both directions. So instead of, you know, having to go out to sixty, or going out to thirty-two, rather, thirty-two, and then working their way around, this would connect in between. You have the community center, you have the multifamily, the senior center. So they feel that there's a strong case to extend Bosler Drive. Now, we don't have a subdivision plaque to go by at this point, but we could look at putting it in, keeping in mind what the dimensions would need to be for lots along that, that stretch of the, of the property. And this would help also to boost whoever would decide to develop in there because then they wouldn't have the cost of, of that street. So the county has approached me on this. We've discussed it. I've been at IDC meetings. We, I wanted you to look at what the, what we show as our connection on the comprehensive plan. So this would be a bit of a change to that. But if we're going to pursue this with the county's help, are you okay with an extension of Bosler Drive? Eventually you'll get plans and specifications so that you know exactly where it's going, how it will fit. But until then, I didn't want to just say, yeah, we'll do it. And then, you know, have some issue come up or some, you know, somebody has a problem with putting that in instead of the way it was drawn on our comprehensive plan, which will change probably in another year and a half. But anyway, I digress. Is the, is the board okay with the county looking at putting in, at us either doing a quick claim deed or something to allow them to be able to do this project on that, on that property or a section of that property?
So is that going to divide our property?
Technically it does, but it connects. And if you have, you, the way the initial drawings were, you kind of had a round connection of, of roads. So you were going to have a road on the west side as well as on the east side anyway.
So how much does it divide off?
Oh, it'd be a small part. Because if you look at, you can kind of see the, the property line. I think that's the dash mark where Bosler comes down. It would then, it would kind of connect in where you see the Spring Trail and Parkwood, where they come together on that comprehensive plan. So Bosler would come down to probably about that point and then it would cut down to Progress Parkway. But again, I don't have a plaque to show you or a sketch. It's just in theory, this is what, this is what the county thinks that they can get money for to do this. IDC wants it because they think it'll offset costs for a developer. And that would, that would help whoever decides to develop in there.
And just my concern would be dividing off that property, you know, that we're excluding part of our possible subdivision and.
Yes and no. So what we look at is if you deed it over, it would be deeded back and then whoever develops it, again, that's why I talk about it would have to meet what our minimum regulations are for housing. Because we're looking at single-family housing along that side of the, of the subdivision, of that, of that property anyway. But that road has to meet those minimum specifications. They've got to figure out how to make that work as a developer would have to. We're just not plating. We're not plating individual lots. We're just plating a street to go through to connect from one side to the other.
So isn't that a, that one basic draft that we had that time showing the subdivision, you know, back there, but it didn't show Bosler being extended?
It did in, in the fact that it was, it came together as a road and kind of looped around.
So it stayed in the subdivision?
Yeah.
It didn't go through?
It was, but it looped around down, too, and then connected and went out to Progress Parkway. Going to wait a minute. I'll go get that plaque or that sketch drawn.
I was just trying to get a picture of how that looped through there.
You're worried about losing X lots for X number of.
Well, you know, prospective developer may object to it.
Losing interest because of work we've already done.
Well, just, you know, just concerned that a future developer may or may not like it.
I'm, I'm in particular getting feedback in my neighborhood that that's a much better option, more desirable than Parkwood.
Oh, you mean extending Paul's.
Future developer may like it.
I would be from an emergency services perspective.
Somebody at the fire department talking about it.
So that's Parkwood, that's Bosler.
And a residential versus a more.
That's what they pointed at. Progress Parkway is down here. This is how it turns out.
So these were all just small lots alongside?
They were roughly a minimum lot size that we required.
Right.
That's just a, and that was just a sketch plan to see if it would fit, how many lots you could get in there, whether this was a, a plan that we wanted to do. This has not been submitted for approval. So you can see where here Bosler comes down and kind of curls around and it comes down to a circle and then goes out. So if you would just do Bosler and you don't do Progress Parkway, you know, Progress Parkway turns into a cul-de-sac where it cuts over here to Bosler, you know, you've got multiple options for a developer.
So Mike, you were saying you were, people were wanting more to have Bosler go through than Parkwood.
Yeah. And Ashley said the same thing. It makes more sense.
From an emergency services perspective, if you've got emergency vehicles traveling X miles per hour trying to get to the emergency, would you rather have it through a residential area or a more thorough.
Well, both connected. Both, you still, you wouldn't have, you would still have Bosler connecting into the, the street system even with Parkwood. So Parkwood wasn't even a, a supposed drag strip to go all the way to Progress Parkway. It had some, it had some stops in there. But again, the justification is that we could, they could do that with economic development money because of the emergency services part of it and that we're boosting the chance of getting single-family dwellings and get a subdivision started. And it may be where it doesn't get approved. This is all the middles and we're, we're still waiting for that application. That has not come out yet. We're just, we're thinking about this at this point.
Would us putting in a road here also include us considering sidewalk or walkability along that?
I mean, it hasn't been discussed.
Because I'm just thinking if it's, it's, you know, it's lots that storm it for a while for developers, then, you know, how, waiting for houses to get developed and put in their sidewalks and connect those pathways could be timely.
That can be, that can be part of the requirement. We're just saying it's got to have sidewalks.
Something would be good.
It's either that or you're going to put it on the builders or the, the individual builders to put them in front of their houses like they did at Valley Springs. And you have to, when you build that house, then you're putting in that sidewalk along with your driveway.
Yeah, because I could just see a lot of benefit for having some sort of walking, walkability on that road. And the sooner the better. So whatever that plan has to be.
They want to cut in Progress Parkway and come back into town or something.
Well, you've got the apartments out there, things like that. And walking bikes, things that can just save for infrastructure that way.
Well, I think we've been wanting to get pedestrian traffic from this side of town over there anyway. This would be a good chance.
Rather be have to go out thirty-two.
Right. Oh, yeah. That's bad. People do it and it's not safe.
Jumping on the dirt.
Yeah, right.
There's people walking to nursing home down there to shop.
They do.
Yeah, they do. And walk down thirty-two.
Yeah.
It alleviates, right in there.
Might create a whole nice corner.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think you don't stop progress.
Yeah.
Yeah. The gold card. Okay. Everybody's good with that? Okay, everybody's good with that? Then I will pass that on to the county, let them know.
Yes.
That's all I got.
Happy, you sure?
I will, I'm darn sure.
Alright.
Oh, wait a minute, there's one more thing.
Wait a minute, is this on the agenda?
Nope.
We can't talk about it.
Sorry, Happy.
You would pass that out? These are the comments that I got back on the questionnaires. So you've got them in hand. I will give them to the department heads when we talk next Wednesday with our department head meeting. So just want everybody to be aware of the items that we'll be looking at and trying to incorporate into the, into the budget for 2023.
I got a question. Is that our parking lot where we're parking now?
Yeah. Well, which part of, yes, right outside the doors.
Right beside the wall.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the bank.
I was going to suggest putting some lines. Kind of free for all parking out there.
Yeah, yeah. Alrighty, thank you. There's nothing, nothing else. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.